We're all pretty much socially distanced at the table, so I'm gonna remove my mask and call a meeting of the Westmoreland City Council to order for March the 18th, 2021. It's 6:00 PM. And Councilman Brown is gonna handle our devotion for it.
Absolutely. Let's bow our heads. Prayer. Our fallen in heaven, we just thank you, Father, for this opportunity tonight. We thank you, Father, for the leaders of this town, Father, to come together to make the best decisions, Father. We pray that you would just ordain us, Father, to just give us wisdom and peace, that we make the right decisions, Father, for our town, for the growth and the opportunities, Father, for our citizens. We ask, Father, that you'll bless us, watch over and protect those in need. And we pray, Father, for forgiveness of our sins. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Could you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Keisha, if you will call, roll call, please.
Doug Brown.
Here.
Felicia Head.
Present.
David Lee.
Here.
Ryan Smalling.
Here.
Chandler Wilkerson. Karen Kirkman.
Here. Let the record reflect that we have everyone present. Mr. Bramley is joining us by Zoom on the call. And we will say that this is a hybrid meeting where part of us are in-house and part of us are not. They're taking place by Zoom. I think it's executive order. What is John 78?
I'm not sure what it is, but there is one, so we're legal.
Yeah, well, it was 70, 71, and it got moved up. I can't keep up with them anymore. So, but we are operating under the governor's executive order that allows for Zoom calls during the pandemic. So with that, we will move to adopt an agenda.
Make the motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Second.
We have a motion by our Vice Mayor and Councilman Brown as the second to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Let the record reflect that it passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the minutes, or excuse me, do we have anyone that's either on the Zoom call or in-house that wants to speak to any of the items on the agenda for public comments? Ms. Keisha, did you have any emails, or?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
If I could point something out, we still have to have a roll call vote on every vote. There's no way for anyone watching this meeting to know anybody votes but you and Mr. Brown, because y'all the only two we see. So we gotta have a roll call on each one.
Okay, very good. Next item is the minutes for the January 21, 21 meeting.
I make a motion that we adopt the Westmoreland City Council minutes from January 21st, 2021.
A second.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilwoman Head to accept the minutes as written. We're open for discussion. Hearing none, if you will call the roll.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Next item is the minutes from the March 11, 2021 special call meeting.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the special call meeting from 3:21. I might also ask if that motion was by Councilman Smalling and a second by Councilman Lee. If you would, when you make the motion, please go ahead and state your name, and that way it'll be on the record for everyone here. We're open for discussion.
I don't have it.
I don't know that it makes a difference or not, but the, on the last minutes that we had, the actual January minutes, we mentioned in the roll call that David Lee and myself were present via Zoom on the special call meeting. There's, there's no language that speaks to that. I don't think, I don't know that matters, but just wanted to point that out.
Okay, we can do that addition. Ms. Head, you need more time?
No, sir, we're good.
Okay. If you call for a roll, please.
Brown.
Yes.
Head.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item is the January 21 financial statement.
Mr. Mayor, David Lee, I'll make the motion to accept the financial statement for January.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Do we have a second?
Councilman Smalling, I'll second the motion.
I have a second, but Councilman Smalling, we are open for discussion.
I've got a question about the January financial statement, the $36,315 that was the Coronavirus Relief Fund, CRF, from the state. It mentioned that you're breaking it out and paying it back toward the unexpected expenses that were not budgeted last year. What is that? What is that gonna, what does that look like when you, when you have to break that out? Where does it go to?
It'll go back to those, like, expense items, like the salary, or like where we pay people for being off for 10 days.
Okay.
That unexpected salary, the cleaning for the public works, so that's gonna be under the building and that sort of thing.
Okay.
But when I get all those numbers calculated in the amounts, I'll let y'all know, instead of just updating on here.
All right, thanks, Keisha.
I would like Felicia Head, I would like to draw everybody's attention to line order 947. As you see, we was budgeted $35,000 for the whole fiscal year, and I added up our new pump that has just recently went out.
You're bringing the water fund or sewer? What page?
The last page, sir. Line 947.
Page eight.
947.
It was budgeted for the whole fiscal year, $35,000. As you see, we've already spent $65,588.85. So we just got bought a new pump. If you add that together, I'd just like to everybody to look that we're already $93,588.85 in the hole.
Okay, and, and Ms. Head is referring basically to an item that's on the agenda later down tonight. As of this statement in, in January, we were 65, like she said, 60, we're at $65,588. And then when we get to the February meeting, we'll look at, or the February financial statement, we'll be looking at those in addition. Plus, there's an item on the agenda tonight to purchase another pump, so. So I think we'll probably have a lot of discussion before this night is over about pumps. Other items. I had a couple of questions about the things, but Keisha's already addressed those already, so I'm good with it.
I just, I was gonna, which, on the notes of January, is it the third note down, this line is already over budget for the year, and then the fourth one down, this line, is that referring to 968 and 790?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know the 968 part of that was the cleaning of re-sanitizing the building from the COVID.
Okay.
And what was the other?
790. Misses miscellaneous expense?
Yeah, her court, that was the cleaning between the court cases.
Okay.
We were paying like $100 for someone to come to court and clean in between each case.
Because we had 900 budget for that, for line 790.
Right.
And we've only spent 254, 42, is that right? Or is there gonna be more?
Let's see, 42, 100.
Well, I'm gonna look, I'm gonna check.
Page three. Now, we're already over budget. Almost $500.
Sorry, is that wrong?
790.
And what did you say that was, the reason why we're over budget?
Some of it is for the cleaning at court in between the cases.
And 9, what is it, 968 is a lot of the same.
Right.
Plus, also on the 968, we had to have a company come in and clean after the building was determined, after it was discovered that we have employees that had tested positive for COVID. We had the building cleaned, and that will be covered on that coronavirus also. So that's a lot of what that money was about, being over budget. Other concerns about the January's financial statement? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Keisha, when you get ready to call for roll for the January statement.
Brown.
Yes.
Head.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move to the next one, the next item. It's the February 2021 financial statement.
Mr. Mayor, David Lee, I'll make the motion to adopt February 2021 financial statement.
I, Chandler Wilkerson.
Motion by Councilman Lee and a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson, thank you, and we are open for discussion.
Just a quick question on the financial notes. The Verizon payment, are they, is that gonna start, you said it's gonna start with the 1,500 monthly lease payment?
Yes, and they paid us the back payment as well.
Okay.
We've received a check for all of 2020 of the payments from 2019 and the January check from 2021. And now I think the one for February has come in also. And both are done with direct deposit, so that will be, that will be regular for us now.
That goes in the general fund?
Goes in water.
In the water.
Water, okay.
Yeah, because we had two options with it. We could put it in the water fund, it's on the water tank, which is a water property. The comptroller's office said we could put it in general fund. However, at the end of each year, we'd have to write the check from general fund to put it back into water and do all the paperwork like it was an interim loan fund. And that's a lot of trouble. A lot of paperwork involved in that, so it just goes straight into the water account. I would be remiss if I did not ask Ms. Keisha here before the board, do we expect more revenue to come in for property tax? I guess the big question is now, of course, with the coronavirus, no one really knows what to expect with, with anything. But as you will notice from our current property taxes, we're down considerably from where we were last year. Last year at this time, I think we were at $498,000. This year, we're at $398,000, so we're roughly $100,000 off. You know, I don't know if people were just holding off and maybe because the weather didn't get in, or that many people have lost their jobs and just wanna be delinquent on it, so.
When's the deadline?
It was February 28.
We did send out letters earlier this week to the people that hadn't paid yet, to let them know that it was still due in the current amount. And we have had people call in, there's been people coming in paying like speeding tickets and stuff, I guess, because they got their stimulus payment, so hopefully the ones that haven't paid, pay those with their stimulus payment.
Very good.
Going back to what was it, page eight, we were on earlier, where we were talking about the pump, the pump that went out late last year that we ordered and came in. It was $20,741.88, so that, that has put, actually, we're over budget in that line now, $30,588.85. We have it on the budget or on the agenda tonight to vote on another pump. Pump station one lost a pump, so keep in mind that you're gonna be seeing this number go quite a bit higher, and we are gonna be having lots of discussion about things, but we'll be coming out of this pond as we, as we progress through tonight, so. Other discussion. Does the notes answer everyone's question?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing no, no further, Ms. Keisha?
Smalling.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Head.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. We're now moving into old business. The first item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance 0112020-2. It was to eliminate the dumpster pickup, and we had first reading on it, and then second reading was tabled, and I think all the questions got answered on that, but we'll see what happens tonight. Do I hear a motion?
Councilman Smalling, I'll make the motion to approve the second reading of the dumpster ordinance
Felicia Head, second.
I have a motion by Councilman Smalling, a second by Councilwoman Head to approve second reading of ordinance number 0112020-2 to eliminate dumpster pickup. We will note under discussion of that, it's, that this takes effect, or the city has set June the 30th, 2021 is the final date that they will do dumpster pickup. I am guessing that our Public Works Director will work with anyone that would need some extra time on that, because it has gotten delayed for a month now, so I don't think that would be a problem, but see if you have other questions about it before we move any further.
Any of those dumpsters, I know Aaron's here, is any of those dumpsters owned by the city that's currently being used, or are they leased? How's that?
They're owned by the city.
So you gotta go pick them up, they have at some point. Five, yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking.
And the majority of the ones that are owned by the city, they won't be, they wouldn't be sellable.
Okay.
They're at the end of their life, man.
So we just gotta get rid of them, then?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take them off when we take off the metal for cleanup day and stuff like that.
Okay.
Other discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Keisha, when you're ready?
Lee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Head.
Yes.
Let the record show that the motion carries unanimously. We move to new business now. Something that has been with us a while, resolution R022021-1, the charter amendments. This has been discussed for a quite a while now. Our attorney, Mr. Bradley, got you a package out of the, all the changes and what would be the updated resolution. So I'll entertain a motion on this, and we need, at least, is my understanding, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Mr. Bradley, we need at least four votes for this to pass.
That's, that's correct, Mayor.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make, Councilman Smalling, I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 032021, no wait, 21-1, resolution, yes.
I'll second. Doug Brown, second.
We have a motion, Councilman Smalling, and a second by Councilman Brown to pass resolution R022021-1, the charter amendments for the city of Westmoreland. So we're open for any discussion. Mr. Bradley, I commend you, Mr. Bradley, on the hard work that you and your team have put in on this, because it, I thought it was a very good document. It met a lot of our needs. There were a couple places that I had to read twice, but I think it's a good document.
Well, I left, Mr. Mayor, I left some of the things in there for historical purposes. For example, the 1951 council with Cliff Minnesas, the city attorney, I didn't want to take that out. That'll give some historical reference in the future. Some of the things, though, those old things we did delete because there was no place in there for them. But it does those things that we talked about in a meeting, I guess it was a month ago or several weeks ago, it was one of the, one of our recent meetings, we went through the, all of the changes. So those changes that we discussed are all in this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add that for the minutes that it be added, that this will come back ratified by legislature, and we'll have to vote on it to approve their acceptance.
That is correct. Once the state legislature receives our resolution, they will go through the document and make sure everything is technically correct with it, then the legislature will vote on it, and then it will be sent back to the city once the state approves it, and it has to be ratified. And I'm guessing that will be in June or July, possibly?
Yes, probably in June or July, it'll be another resolution, and then by December, we have to get that proof of ratification back to the Secretary of State's office, and I suggest we get an acknowledgement from them this time, because that's what the problem was a few years ago. They, we sent it to them and they never acknowledged it, so it didn't go into effect. So we wanna, we wanna be sure that this goes into effect to make all those changes we've been talking about for two years.
Okay. Ms. Trout is listening with, with full audio volume over there to make sure that this happens, and all council members are available tonight to know that, so it should, should go off without any problems, though. That's what we expect to happen anyway. Other discussion about the document? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Keisha, if you'll call for a roll?
Head.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. So I'll get that document signed tonight, John, and Keisha can get it to you ASAP.
It'd probably be better if she just sent that directly to Representative Lambert, and also with a copy also to Senator Hale. If we can get that directly to them, then they'll put them a day ahead on moving forward to get it to the Legislative Services Office, get this prepared for presentation to the Bureau Assembly.
Okay, very good. Thank you again for your hard work on it. The next item on our agenda is ordinance number 03021-1 of weather policy. We, well, when do we get a, get a motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion, Felicia Head, to adopt ordinance 032021-1.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Smalling, I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Head, a second by Councilman Smalling to adopt the ordinance. This will be first reading. The ordinance will require two readings. So if there's anything that is, that we want to change between now and second reading, that can be done, so I'll open it for any discussion that you might have.
The, I just had a question about the, the last paragraph. By the way, I think this is a great ordinance. It's a good step, great direction for employees that, you know, we may not have another snowfall like this for some time, but then you never know, and this definitely sets, sets up for someone trying to get out of their house when they just are not able to. I know I was stuck in my driveway for about four days in a row, it was impossible to, to do anything or go anywhere, but one of the questions I had was, it says, where these employees, deemed essential personnel who provided a choice between time off to be used at a later date, equivalent to time awarded. That's, I believe it's, to me, it sounds a lot like comp time, and I just wanted to see if anyone else felt that same way, and how, how will we keep up with that? What will we do? Is there something in place that you may already think, be thinking about?
Okay, this is items that we can bring up at work study and hash it out before we print the document for second reading. And if anyone wants to respond to it now, it's behind.
It's something to think about. Oh, we have time, it's a good fourth off to clear that up, how they handle it. Right.
Anything else? Ms. Keisha, if you'll call for a roll?
Lee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
But reflect the first reading passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the IDB appointments.
Please skip spring.
Oh, excuse me. Uh, excuse me, uh, I did skip the spring. And it was a very good point that was brought up, why do we vote on spring cleanup day? And it's because it doesn't have a line item that's in the, in the budget. So we need to make sure we separate that and put it in. So I'll entertain a motion for spring cleanup day that will be Saturday, April the tenth, twenty twenty-one. From eight o'clock until twelve noon at the old Public Works Building on Lake Road.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Brown would like to make a motion that we set this year's two thousand twenty-one spring cleanup day. For Saturday, April the tenth, from eight to twelve.
Felicia Head, second it.
Motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilwoman Head, we're open for discussion.
Do we have the cost of the dumpsters and everything already for the line items in the budget?
If you go to your sanitation budget. And the overage that we have on that, I'm thinking it was about eight hundred dollars. Covers the dumpsters and then the other just goes into the salary and overtime budget. Cause generally everyone comes out to help on that day, so usually it is, it is all overtime.
How, how are we advertising?
We will put it on, on Facebook, in the newspaper, on the website.
And repeat.
I guess we can post, post it fine at the post office.
Um, I think it takes too much on the.
Yes.
We might commit it on there, we're only allowed so much room, so I'm not sure.
When's the next water bills?
It'll go on at the end of this line, so that would.
That'd be perfect, it could be done.
Get them up, bring, if everybody got their mail on time, it'd be like three days.
I think it's good to definitely state that it must be a resident of the city of Westmoreland. I don't know if that's an issue for y'all, Aaron, is it? Has there ever been, has there ever been?
I got a pretty good guard dog at the gate.
Oh, okay.
Pretty good. On everybody.
I also want it noted while we're on camera that elderly and disabled can call and schedule their pickups.
Yeah, if, if they're unable to, to get out and we, we. Mr. Sizmore and his crew are very good about going and helping our elderly and disabled.
Glad we're able to provide it again, we didn't have it last year, or did we?
No, we didn't, COVID, we didn't have it, so. We had one in the fall and had one this, this one will be this spring.
Yeah.
Other discussion. Ms. Keesha?
Smalling?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
But the record reflects that the motion can carry unanimously. Now, back, back on the agenda, the next item is the IDB appointments.
Mayor, I'd like to defer this to the work study, please.
We have a motion.
Felicia Head, sorry.
We have a motion to defer to the work study.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Smalling, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Head, a second by Councilman Smalling to defer to the work study. With a deferment, there's no discussion, so Ms. Keesha, if you'll call for all?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Smalling?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Four yes, one no, but IDB appointments will be discussed at the work study. Next item on the agenda. Will be to purchase a replacement force main pump from Dutch Creek Pumping Station. Do I have a motion? So wait a second, so we can start the discussion.
Mayor Felicia Head makes the motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Smalling, I'll make the motion to approve the purchase.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Head, a second by Councilman Smalling to approve the purchase, we're open for discussion.
Can I ask you some questions?
Would you like to come on up? Give a little leisure and get across the room. And I might add, for the discussion purposes, the price of this pump is twenty-eight thousand dollars, is he has.
Mr. Sizmore, as I stated earlier, that we have went through several pumps. And we've exceeded over the amount that they, the previous council has put in place for the budget. My question to you as the supervisor is what have you put in place or what are you doing to try to prevent all of these pumps going out? Cause it seems like we went through several.
Yeah. We have done several things, actually. We are getting on a maintenance schedule that we previously had not had. On the pump, as far as changing filters and oil. I have also changed the brand type of oil that we use. Which this pump is different than the majority of the pumps that I have to purchase. The majority of the pumps that I have to purchase is the vacuum pumps. This one is actually a force main pump, so it's, it's different. But the, the biggest amount of the cost has went to the vacuum pumps, that's why I'm talking about those specifically. But, so we, we've tried to put in a lot of maintenance and focus on preventative things. Instead of just fixing them once they tear up. And, you know, only time will tell if it's gonna make it any difference. The biggest issue, in my opinion, is the runtime on them. The Station One and Station Two, which would be Dutch Creek and Davis Branch Stations. They, they run constantly, twenty-four seven. They, the pumps don't ever take a break. And like Jerry and I have talked about before, you know, it's not designed to run, but like, you know, seven, eight hours a day max. You know, where it's running twenty-four, some of them are running twenty-four seven. And a lot of it is due to the age of the system. We can't find the leaks because the system is so deep in the ground. To, to repair the small leaks and, and a small leak on the vacuum system. When it's miles away from the station, creates a big amount of runtime on the pumps. And so I'm trying to implement the, you know, maintenance part of it to, to help with the. Hopefully prevent against the breakdowns of the pumps as fast. And then we're also working on replacing some pits, trying to find some leaks and things like that. But that's also when we have time, you know, with the staffing issues and everything else, you know. And whether, all that depends on how much time like we can spend, you know, focus on trying to fix these issues. But as of right now, what I have done personally is the maintenance issues, the, the oil filters and things like that. We, we've done a lot of updates of that. So I'm hoping that that will change, but this specific pump is not. Take oil and things like that to run it, it runs off of a belt drive electric motor. So it just, when they break, they just break. These, and Chris can vouch for this, a lot of times, what kills these pumps is things that people flush. Or they get into the, the system, toys, things like that, they'll get in there and they'll bind the pump up. Cause what this is, is it's a screw, look, imagine a corkscrew like you're opening a wine bottle with. Imagine that being encased in a big rubber housing that's encased of a steel pipe. Well, when that corkscrew turns, it's a positive displacement pump. So it's, once it turns, it pushes on the walls of that rubber encasement and it forces the fluid out the other end. So it pulls it from this side to that side. And what, what happens is there's no tolerance, I mean, it's, it's nothing, it's, it's always touching the walls at some point now through there. So when you get something solid in there, which is not designed to push a solid through. So say if you got a rock or a dog toy or something like that, that somebody flushed down. Once it gets in there, it puts it in a bind and it's either gonna tear the rubber as it pushes it through. Cause it's gonna make it, push it through, there's no way it can not push through. So it, it's either gonna tear the rubber or it's gonna break that shaft. And this one actually broke the shaft, we don't know what it is until we get it apart to see. And a lot of times, once it does break it, it, it already gets pushed through anyways. So we'll know more once he gets it apart, but these pumps are a lot more expensive than the vacuum pumps. We, we bought the other one that we had budgeted for, we did purchase it. And as a backup pump and we still have it, but it will not fit in this station. Because this station in particularly that broke, takes a bigger pump than what we had already bought for a backup pump, so.
I think one of my questions is, you said that you, how long have you been doing the ledger on the oil filters and all of the service?
Okay, so we started that. I wanna say eight to ten months ago, something, Jerry, do you remember? It's been somewhere around, it's been several months that we started. Updating, like making sure that we do the maintenance on them and the filters changes and stuff. When we started that, we were using a different type of oil. And after that happened, we had like three pumps go out, just bam, bam, bam. And when we did some investigating on it, the oil was starting, for some reason, was like. Turning into a sludge and it, and it wasn't letting it circulate and it wouldn't even do an oil change yet. And I, I don't know if it was the brand or what, so I did a lot more digging, found all the manufacturers. And found out what we were specifically supposed to run in those pumps. Because when I, whenever I first started, we just ran real tail in them. And well, that evidently is not what we're supposed to run in them. So this now have ordered vacuum pump oils specifically from the. Glowback, which is who we get a lot of sewer parts from and they also sell them pumps as well. So it's coming straight from them, so I know it's the correct oil that goes in it. And, you know, so far it's doing good, but I don't want to jinx myself and say that it's gonna fix the issues. But like I said, the biggest issue is just runtime. It's just, you know, the, the amount of time that we had to spend or that they had to spend running constantly is what's killing them. But we are trying to make it better, you know, make it last as long as we can anyways.
When they're, when they're doing the on-call checks on the weekends, what part of that process do they look at for those pumps to verify that?
Okay, every, every morning when we come in on Saturdays and Sundays on our day, well, every day, Monday through Friday also. But specifically Saturdays and Sundays when we're by ourselves, we'll come in. And all of the pumps have a sight glass on them and we'll check the oil level in all the pumps. And we always, we got a checklist and we always, you know, initially put the date on it and check it off. And if we have to add to a pump, we have a section where we write down what pump that is, how much we had to add. That way we can kind of keep up with which ones are using what and things. And we also write down the run hours, how long the, the pumps have ran.
So that's what they do when they're checking that situation?
Yes, sir. So like if you look at overtime sheets, it'll say check stations and water, sewer and water rounds or something like that, that's what we're doing. Is we're coming in, we're checking the pump stations, make sure one, that they're not down. We're, we're not losing vacuum and two, we're keeping a check on the oil and hours and all that kind of thing.
And you see those things on the log?
Yes.
Check them on Monday.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So right now the pump is operational? It's not operational at all?
It's been down for, well, since that big rain that we had a couple of weeks ago, so it's been down ever since then.
And I may have asked you before, but I can't remember now. Is this not one of those pumps that we generally have to get in from overseas?
Yes, now Jimmy has found somebody that will get it to us and it's there in country now. But it still takes a while, he ordered it last Wednesday, Thursday, somewhere around in there. Thursday, I believe, last week and he said it should be here, hopefully within about three to four weeks from that time. So we're looking, you know, it still takes a while. Cause I believe if, if I'm understanding it correctly, they kind of build these as you order them. Cause I don't know, we got four pumping stations and we got like three different sizes of them. But we can use some in the smaller ones, but this one has the biggest ones and we don't have a big one, big, big look one. And it's also a belt drive, we have two stations have direct drive, so the motor's hooked directly to the pump with like a drive shaft. And then we have two that are belt drives, they have a, a big motor and a bigger pump. So they turn it on a belt because it'll shear the drive shaft if they run it direct drive, they're not, the, the pumps are big. So the belt gives it a little, it'll, it'll, when it kicks on, you'll hear it spin. And it gives it just a, I guess a little more play or something, I don't know, but kind of a cushion. So it doesn't break things as much, but so, and that's the one that's out is the belt drive one.
So the station's completely down?
No, sir, no, if it was completely down, we would.
So how, how does that affect the citizens?
Yeah, so we have two pumps in the basement. Both of them are these pumps, we have three upstairs, there's a vacuum pumps. The basement pumps are the direct.
Force main.
Force main pumps. So that's, we, we've got one running right now and that's what's keeping the station up. If we, God forbid, had a big rain like that and another rock or something got pushed through and it broke that. I, I, to be honest, I don't know what we would do. Yeah, other than pumping it out at the station, but I don't know how we would do that. But we would be in a world of hurt if it, if it comes to that point. So it's pretty much, I mean, we have to have it, it's no, you know, way that we can't. Cause if it goes down, then that whole area out there will be it without sewer. That's the mayor's house.
Everything basically from.
Tops of the.
Some to drive back?
Yep, Felicia's house is on that one, your house.
Brown, we're coming to your house.
Okay, I'll leave the door.
Is on Station Two and Brian's on Station Four, so.
But the, the residents right now should not see a disruption anytime.
No, there should not be a disruption, if anybody has any problems, they need to call us. If they hear a roar outside of their house, outside of the bedroom window, call us, that's probably.
In a nutshell, you're running on your emergency pump right now.
Yeah.
So that's the importance of, of getting, it's, it's not an option. So that's the importance of, of getting, it's, it's not an option of uh. What we have, uh, thank goodness you don't have to go to the bank and be doing an emergency loan to buy one. Uh, it is gonna have to come out of your reserve fund, but uh. You know, it, it, this is something that's gotta, gotta be done. Unfortunately, later down the agenda, we've got other items to speak of. It's gonna need to come out of this fund also, so.
These pumps are depreciated, right? In the budget or the?
See, I don't know. Uh, because it's a device, uh. I mean, it, it should have a long life on it, but it was. Like uh, Mr. Sizmore was saying, because they run so many hours. Uh, and the force main pumps not so much as a vacuum pump. So the vacuum pumps are the one that we uh, wear out quite frequently. But they're not nearly as, as expensive, but this is the big pump that pumps it to the sewer plant. And uh, you know, there's no way of getting it to the wastewater plant and, and uh. You know, it's. We, we basically have two stations that take the same pump. And then our other two stations take another style pump is what, but uh, and same. We have an extra pump, but unfortunately we have the wrong pump.
I, I was just thinking of it in the financial terms as far as how we put money back for additional ones and things like that.
And uh, I, when I first became mayor, I used to get a monthly report of each pump and its serial number and its date of purchase and model number. And what uh, what station it was in. But uh, the council deemed later on that that was an awful lot of material to be getting together. So uh, both, those reports were dropped and uh, I, I do know that, that. Everything's being done uh. You know, right now as, as far as trying to make sure the oil's changed, that they're updated and checked. Uh, I'm sure we can uh, investigate further to uh, to set a bit. You know, but it's, it's a closed system, so you can't really look inside of it without tearing it down. And uh, to tear one that, and maybe that's a, a program that would be available. I don't think we have the means to do it, but it might be after, let's say. Ten thousand hours or twenty thousand hours that uh, there's a company that comes in and actually tears these down. Uh, our problem right now, and this is not really related to purchasing a pump. We need to get the point across to the public, but you know, that's not a trash can. And uh, one of our number one enemies is these flushable wipes. And these wipes get into these pumps and, and thi- this is happening all across the United States right now. And I'll, I'll let anyone that is listening to the meeting tonight online. Know this is a direct result of possibly wipes and we're looking at twenty-eight thousand dollars here. And when you're trying to get water and sewer bills lowered. And we're purchasing three of it and tell me if I'm wrong, I think at least one of the last two. Was, was shut down and, and broke because of wipes.
Yes, sir.
So uh, and they, they don't like uh, they don't like anything else. And they said they don't like valves. They don't like check valves. Uh, they're, they're just an enemy to plumbing. So.
I think uh, speaking on the wipes, not to interrupt you, but uh, they'll hit the valves and, and uh, our system has butterfly valve. So you think of a pipe and you think it's got a line pretty much grew in the middle of it. Well, when you got it open, it's just got like a, a sliver standing there. Well, those wipes will hit it. And it's pulling vacuum on this side, so it just folds it around it. And then another one folds around it and it just keeps building up. Well, then it stops the pipe up. Then we go out and we have to work the valve. If we're lucky enough, we can work it and it'll break it loose and then it sucks it through. Well, when it sucks it through, if it happens that way. Uh, and it does break loose, then you got a wad uh, and, and they kinda get hard after they've been in there for a while. And uh, it's almost like a really hard rope. Uh, it's kinda what I've thought of. Like when you try to pull them out of those pumps, they're, they're like a real hard, like a dog chew toy rope, like really big. And they get real hard and, and you gotta claw them, you know, six inches around, but when it hits that pump all at once. And you can actually hear them come into the tank. Uh, but when it hits that pump all at once, I think that's got a lot of why. It'll put it in a bind and, and just break it. But uh, that, that is a huge problem. I got an email on it last week. Uh, photo, they had a pump that uh, it would probably be a hundred thousand dollar pump and a, a huge uh, uh sewer system. And uh, I mean, the intake on this thing is this big around, so. A lot bigger than anything we've got. It's probably a two foot round pump and it's completely called, clogged up with these wipes. And uh, so if it's gonna do something like that to that bigger pump, I mean, it's amazing what it's doing to ours, you know?
A lot of people are using the Clorox and the disinfectant wipes right now?
Yeah.
And, and they purchase them and they read on them where it says flushable. They are flushable. They will go through your toilet, but that's as far as they go. Uh, they, they don't like to go much farther. And I've got a witness that it's sitting right behind you of how many of those go through. That he has to basically pick out by hand when it arrives at the wastewater treatment plant. Because we've got big screens that, that are catching these things and uh. It, it's a, it's absolutely unreal and amazing because they've got uh, nylon and some kinda poly and stuff. They don't break down. Uh, they may say biodegradable on it. Biodegradable, biodegradable is probably seventy-five years.
Yeah.
So.
He gets about a dumpster full of them a week out there, cause he, he dumps, he puts them in a bucket, carries them down, throws them in the dumpster. And uh, it's, it's about a dumpster a week.
Okay. Mo- moving along here, we got to buy a pump. So you have other questions about the pump itself, but I think it's a good discussion for the public to hear about it, to know. What it is costing them.
Right. Oh.
Okay. Ms. Keeson?
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
But for record, reflect that the motion carries unanimously, as I said earlier, that we'll have to come out of our uh. Uh, uh, reserve fund. So we will need to be doing a uh, a budget amendment shortly. So we, we will include that in our budget amendment to, to uh, to be able to, to make that. All nice and tidy. The next item is to hire Caleb Gray as a full-time public works uh, of, of person.
I'd like to speak. Um, Mr. Siz.
No, make most, motion?
I make a motion to her, um. Uh, Cody Gray. I'm sorry, Caleb Gray. Felicia Head, sorry.
I'll Doug Brown's second.
Have a motion by Councilman Head, uh, second by Councilman Brown. Uh, we're open for discussion. Go ahead.
Mr. Sizmore, how's he doing?
Um, he's doing well. Um, so far, uh, he's done good on the garbage truck. Uh. Yeah, I think it was yesterday, uh, when it started raining. Yesterday, we're working on sewer up here. Yeah, we got to uh, put him in on his first experience with a sewer issue and he did well with that. He didn't throw up or anything, so that's plus. Uh, but he's been there every day. Um, and he seems to like the job, so uh.
Good.
Uh, he's a, he's pretty quiet. He doesn't say a lot at work, but it could just be where he's getting to know everybody too.
Have you done some safety run downs with him and some different things like that?
Yes, uh, we've talked about like sewer gases, uh, uh, you know, things like hanging on the truck and. And uh, make sure he wears his uh, work uh, I can't remember.
Best.
His best and things like that. Uh, and uh, you know, when to wear my things like that, when you don't have to wear, you know, anytime you're working in the road, make sure you got it on. Uh, and uh, yeah, uh, we, we've tried to do a little bit, uh. Kinda do some uh, you know, training uh, on the sewer stations with him, which that'll take a lot of time. That's the longest thing around here. But yeah, he's, so far he's, he's done really good. Uh, he's observed, so.
So as someone that is riding the trash truck, he's aware of the advancement opportunities he has for us if he wants to.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
That brings up a good question. Does he have any uh, certifications or any desire to be further certified?
He, you know, he, he said that uh, he's interested in it, uh, which, you know, I hope uh, he sticks around long enough. Cause uh, you know, he's gotta be here a year uh, before we can send him to get uh, licenses and things. But uh, yes, he is interested. Uh, that was one of the questions I asked, you know, when I kinda interviewed him. Um, so yeah, I mean, he seems to be interested and uh, I think he would do well with that. Uh, so. Uh, I hope, I got, if he sticks around. I don't wanna get plans for somebody and then they're not here after six months.
And I might add while you're discussing with it, this uh. I went ahead and authorized uh, Mr. Sizmore to put Mr. Gray on. Because we were down three people and that puts it pretty much in an emergency situation. Uh, but, but it was done with the understanding that it would be coming to the council for a confirmation vote. And uh, he still has two openings right now, yes, right? Could be immediate openings.
Have you received applications for those?
Yes, sir. I have.
Okay.
And the deadline on that is tomorrow.
Okay. And you have them on file with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions, concerns? I spoke with him yesterday briefly and he seems like he's a, a great young man. Uh, very again, just like you said, he seemed like he was eager to, to learn and uh, we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
I, I think he's a great fit with the guys. Uh, you can already tell it in the timing of trash, trash routes just in, in Monday and Thursday.
Yes, it's uh, the, the uh, I'm trying to say this delicately, but yeah, the, the time of the trash route has cut down about an hour, hour and a half. So it's been good.
That's excellent.
That's great.
Ms. Keeson, it's up to you now.
Molly?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Head? Yes.
But for record, reflect that the motion carries unanimously and uh, we're gonna get all, all of that made official now. And just stay where you are for a second, because the uh, next item on the agenda is the Henry Harris Road paving. Uh, as you will, will note, uh. They're going to be paving uh, thirty-one E, old thirty-one E, any, I guess, any day now. Aaron may even have an update for us. So with the weather being what it's been, uh. Uh, we probably don't want them to uh, obviously give us the first few batches of mix out of it. Because there's polymers involved in the asphalt and, and uh, it definitely helps it adhere and mix together well. So uh, it doesn't hurt my feelings that uh, they wait a few more days. However, uh, it's like an obstacle track down through there right now is, is with many roads in Westmoreland. But Henry Harris Road actually had part of it giveaway. And uh, we'll get a motion in a second here so we can discuss this officially.
Ms. Mayor, I make the motion that we do the additional paving on Henry Harris Road.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Smalling, second by Councilman Brown on the Henry Harris Road paving. Uh, go ahead, Aaron.
Uh, yes, I received a quote, uh, when I asked uh, Mr. Riley to come out and look at it, it's seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, for the additional piece up to the top of the hill. Uh, and this was before the road uh, gave out. As I, I already had this in place. Um, that section of road is the worst section on that entire road. It's, it's basically gravel. Uh, what gravel that I didn't put in it, it was already basically gravel before that. Um, he said, uh, after I talked with Mr. Riley yesterday, uh, he told me that uh. They would, they're planning to be here by the end of the month, uh, close to the end of the month. And I said, uh, well, he said that they had planned to start last Monday. They brought their crew back and then with all the rain and everything, they weren't able to work. And uh, when I talked to him, I said, well, um, I said, I would prefer you to go ahead and put a couple of people in, in front of us a little bit. Uh, just so we're not getting the first little bit out. And he said he understood that. Um, and he said, uh, by the first week of April, they should be here, not later than first week of April. So um, weather permitting, you know, unless we just have rain constantly. Uh, but uh, but he said that uh. You know, it shouldn't be any issue while they're here to go ahead and knock this out uh, for the price.
What, what's the length? What's the, the distance that, that we're paving?
To be honest with you, I haven't measured it.
But it's the top of the hill?
Top of the, top of the first.
But not the city limits. It just, just to the top of the hill, to the, to the end of.
Henry.
Not, yeah, the end of Henry Harris where it begins on, on thirty-one, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
How thick is it, Aaron?
Right now?
No, how thick will it be when they pave it?
I believe it'll be two inches, I believe is what he did. Uh, it's either inch and a half to two inches, but I believe it's two.
Does, do you have a quote that states that? Cause what we have?
Um, and I could ask for that. Uh.
If you would, I, I appreciate it, cause I think it needs to stay.
Are, are you gonna be doing some major ditching over there in the meantime to prepare for that?
Um, on old thirty-one or are you talking about?
Well, Henry Harris ain't old thirty-one.
Um, we actually went out there and uh, ditched the other day. Uh, they're uh, right in that area, there's a lot of river raft rock that they, they put in there.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, if I did anything, I would have to dig that up. But this actually, uh, they actually come out and they clean the edges off. Uh, and if it need ditching, they'll either. Uh, ditch a little bit of it or they'll tell me what I need to, to ditch out to keep the roads from uh, getting washed out, things like that. Uh, is what he, he had told me on the phone. So, um, but uh, we did work on a lot of the ditch on that road. Uh, which that road is kinda like where Ms. Head lives, uh, Forest Drive area. There's a lot of trees on, on, in the yards and uh, man, I fill the ditches up. I mean, it's a, it's a battle uh, down those, a couple of those roads that are in there to, to keep the, the leaves out. Uh, but uh, but yeah, that's a, we, we actually hauled three loads of leave and uh, and debris out of the ditches this last week, I believe it was.
Did the council do a sale bid on this or did it not need to be a sale bid since it was over a certain amount?
No, what, what happened, we called and asked them, they're, they're paving.
Okay.
Uh, they're gonna be in the area, therefore this would be the best part. But, but, and they wouldn't give us this uh, price uh, any other time. It's just while they're here. They're, they're gonna be right there headed and all they gotta do is just turn up a hill and down. Uh, I would dare say, uh. Of course, if, if it is deemed that we do need to go back and get a sale bid for it. And, and the reason that we inquired about this was while they were here to check it. The road was getting in such bad shape and the people that live out there were asking about it. And saying, what are you gonna do? You know, uh, it makes sense for you to at least do this part. So we had no idea what the cost would be. And I was just looking at it. He submitted this on February the seventeenth. And it's uh, seventy-six hundred dollars to uh, of course, we're, we're doing two hundred and nine thousand dollars worth of paving. So um, but this is a good price, but the thing about it. If you ask him to quote this price today, it's probably gonna at least be thirty percent higher. Because uh, paving is. Because uh, paving is all uh, petroleum based. And you know how much the gas pumps went up in the last, uh, last month. So this, this bid would, would be the same way. Uh, I don't, I says, that's where we ask our attorney exactly, uh, maybe what, what uh, how we move forward, being we've already uh, done the seal bids and they, they gave us the best price and this is what we're gonna, if this was just kind of an addendum to it. And of course, that was subject to the, the council wanting to do that with. And also there is no, uh, no, we've exhausted the paving line, plus we've taken it out of the, the fund balance. So in order to do this, uh, unless somebody comes up with a better idea, it, it would come out of fund balance additionally also.
So while they're on oh thirty-one eight, this is, this, they're, they're saying that they could do this portion of Henry Harris Road for seventy-six hundred dollars. I'd like to hear from Mr. Bradley also. Mr. Bradley, you still with us?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm trying to get unmuted. Uh, what, what is your question?
Do you see any issue with uh, us adding? The Rogers Group added an additional uh, piece for Henry Harris to be paid for seventy-six hundred dollars. But we've already did seal bids for the project on oh thirty-one E. Is there any issue with that going forward? Can we approve that tonight? Or, or is that considered a separate job or a, a separate project?
What are you gonna do with your seal bids? You gonna reject all the bids?
No, no, sir. We, we've already voted and they are coming. Uh, we're going to do uh, just to use an amount, uh, one mile of road. And on that one mile of road, we had a, a portion of another road that has collapsed. And we have asked what they would charge us while they're here to go ahead and fix that for us.
Look, you, you said it was under ten thousand dollars, right? So I don't see a problem with that. But it's an emergency for one thing, then also it's an amount that wouldn't necessarily have to be bid.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that answer.
We just wanted to make sure we're okay on it.
I think you're fine.
Okay, thank you. So it will basically now be up to the wishes of the council. Uh, Aaron, do you think that that bid, I know y'all put a lot of gravel and done some work on it. Do you think that it will be sufficient?
I actually spoke with him about it yesterday and he said that they would still hold to that price.
Okay.
They, they're doing a two inch top on the rest of old thirty-one eight, right? Isn't that standard?
I believe that's right.
Okay.
Uh, to be honest, it's been so long since we did this.
Yeah.
Yeah, some, some of it was one and a half and some of it was two. But we've had as many studies done and, and we had the different bids, so.
Yeah.
They did it. Uh, actually, the engineers drew up what they, our, our engineers drew up what, what they recommended for oh thirty-one and summer drive. Um, so, um, I, I, I would have to go back and look because I remember it was either inch and a half or two inches. And they tossed that back and forth a lot and I can't remember exactly what we wound up going with on all the road. So I don't want to. But I can find out a number from him on this. Um, but uh, I mean, I would think that it would be at least an inch and a half. Uh, and he even says in this bid, uh, considering how rough the existing pavement is, you know, is, is what he priced it for. So I'm assuming that he's gonna take a little extra material because uh, the way from that wording, but.
Yeah.
I know what assume it does do.
Okay, any other questions? There again, once uh, it, once this is voted on and if it is passed, then uh, it will be uh, up to the council to do a budget amendment to move that line, uh, some money from that line over. Okay, Ms. Keisha, I don't hear anyone else, so go, go right ahead.
Ken?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
But the record reflect that it passes unanimously. Uh, Mr. Sizmore, thank you. I, I think it's all we've got for, for right now. May have a little bit of extra if it, if it comes up that you may want to stick around just a few minutes for.
Yes, sir.
Has our engineers joined us?
We have someone on an iPad. Not sure who it is.
Okay, that, that may be them. That, that may be it was so. Can we check and see? Because uh, the next item is the wastewater treatment plant bid.
Are they unmuted?
They're not.
Yeah, whoever's just joined our meeting is iPad too. Would you please unmute yourself and identify yourself? Either that or we're gonna put you in the waiting room. It's your choice.
Okay, I guess that's not Mr. Dickinson, so.
Well, they're back in the waiting room.
Okay. Uh, we'll move ahead with this. The uh, next item is the wastewater treatment plant bid. Uh, we will get a motion in a second and discuss it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we um, move forward the wastewater treatment plan bid. Councilman Brown?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion. Councilman Smalling?
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilman Smalling to go ahead and discuss the wastewater treatment plant bid. We had the bid opening the last Tuesday. Uh, did everyone get the, uh, the documents from that? So that uh, they've had a chance to, to look at those and this case should uh, give us some, uh, just a few minutes to go. Basically, uh, I think there were five bids total. There was a uh, uh, bid by Jones Brothers Construction. And uh, when we went through all of, uh, well, the engineers went through all of those bids and they found out that it was incomplete. So uh, there was two areas on the bid where they didn't uh, uh, check uh, proper areas of it, uh, give documentation uh, about things and uh, it basically disqualified it. Uh, the council can look over the fact that those items wasn't submitted on the bid and can uh, and can still accept it. But is our recommend, uh, the recommendation of our engineering firm that we uh, accept W and O Construction. And they have a bid of six million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And that's their base bid on a Parks and Plant, which was what, what are, uh, that was the base. The alternative one and two were other brands of uh, of, of companies that, that produce the material. Best way that I, I can, can say it is uh, the way I understand it, if you wanted to buy a Chevrolet, they priced you a Chevrolet, but if you wanted to buy a Ford or a Chrysler, then let's say A would have been Ford or number one would have been a Ford, no, it would have been Chrysler. So that it gave uh, alternatives, but the base bid was everything that was in our plans with a Parks and Unit that uh, the state had okayed. So uh, we'll work through any questions that you might have. Uh, they put in uh, recommendations and uh, uh, research from, from former plants and it had uh, names and numbers that we recall, which are, are uh, certified sewer plant operator, wastewater treatment plant operator. Penny asked those names because she wanted to call the operators that closed plants themselves. And Councilman Head asked for uh, uh, backgrounds on, on the, the plants also. So uh, but this is the recommendation of our uh, of GMC or engineers that we go with W O Construction of Livingston, Tennessee for six million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Because they were the lowest bid. It had everything complete in, in the bid. They checked all the boxes, answered all the questions. So if you have questions, we can go from there.
Mr. Mayor, it's easy to accept this bid at this price. But I don't think we could talk about the funding mechanism and how we're gonna pay this.
Okay, good question. Uh, we are trying to get this financed through the state of Tennessee with the revolving loan fund. Revolving loan fund monies come from the EPA. They're handed down to the state and, and the state of Tennessee regulates those funds. Uh, we have had to uh, put in every year, I've been mayor six years and I've put in for it every year since I've been mayor, uh, for it to be a priority item for us to uh, obtain funding for this plant. Uh, when we first began this journey back in two thousand and fifteen, the amount that was asked for was one nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, as you can see, and as you can see from the, the bids that come in, they went from anywhere from six point, basically six point three million to, to seven point two million. So it was a pretty wide range and we had one, two, three, five, uh, five companies that actually come in to uh, to provide bids. So uh, this would be, if you accept this bid, then the next step in the process would be to secure the funding from the revolving loan fund. If for some reason we do not obtain the funding, then uh, everything will basically be null and void at that point.
So we currently don't have an approval on their priorities list like we have in the past?
We are on the priorities list and uh, I don't know where we are as far as the top ten right now, but uh, they, they're waiting patiently to hear from us, waiting to, to see what we say tonight.
Okay, so we don't have a dollar amount that they have set aside for us at this time?
Uh, the dollar amount that you would be seeking at this time would be six million, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And, and I might add that previously we had secured, uh, basically eighteen, they call it loan forgiveness of ten percent. Uh, which would be six hundred, uh, six hundred and what would it be? Six hundred and four thousand, six hundred and forty thousand. Um, but there is a, a possibility that we could obtain uh, more. They, they used to call it a grant, now they call it loan forgiveness. So we're basically six hundred thousand dollars on that. It would be nice if we could double it or triple it. But uh, you know, I, I do know that uh, we've been told that if they do the funding, we do have a minimum of a ten percent.
Okay, so none of those things are in place tonight like they have been in the past?
No, no, well, because it's taken so long, we had everything uh, pretty much secured. But because it's uh, taken so long to get everything going, we, we lost. I don't know if you say we lost our funding. I don't know if we really ever had to stamp on it, but it was there. And uh, it's just like it is now, we, we don't have the paperwork, but the money is fair. I think they, so I forgot how many million they told me they had, but they have secured and, and have put back.
So they can give us an answer pretty quick on the funding?
I don't know if anything would be real quick. I'm not, I'm not gonna go that far.
Relatively.
Uh, I never thought it would take me six years and three months to uh, to get to where we are tonight, but it, but it did.
Okay, now, um, let's talk about the, the payback on this. It's a thirty year or a twenty year or?
Right now it's on twenty years, uh, but none of it's set in stone until um, they discuss it with us.
How does uh, Ms. Penny, is that her name? How does Ms. Penny feel about this? And I'd like to hear what Mr. Chris thinks about it as well.
Yes. Uh, Ms. Penny, uh, who's our certified operator. And uh, I, I spoke to her today, uh, because I asked her, did you wanna be at the meeting tonight or zoom in? And she said that she had worked with W O uh, in the past. Uh, they had a good reputation, but as a matter of fact, they built one of our tanks. Uh, so they, they've been around for a while, uh, have a wealth of experience and uh, uh, they're, they're pretty much local. They're right up the road in, in Livingston. So uh, she put her stamp of approval on it. And Chris, I'll, I'll let you, let you speak to it also.
Back in the mid nineties when W O built tanks down there, I got no lot of guys and uh, very trustworthy. Uh, I feel comfortable with W O building new plant myself.
You've looked over the plans and approved of what they presented?
Yeah, I've been looking over them for the last four years. They've been a few arguments, but pretty much they look real good now.
And there may be some change orders. I can't imagine a project of this size. Uh, and the magnitude of it, it, it wouldn't have some change orders. So there, there may be some adjustments as, as we go through and all of that will be worked on with, with our lending partners on it also.
Speaking of, speaking of change orders, unlike a typical job, because we don't have the funding secured yet, will there be like a timeline to start the construction and a completion date at some point?
Uh, once we secure the funding, then we can set the timeline. Uh, until we have the, if for some reason funding was rejected and uh, you know, they don't wanna have a couple of million dollars of parts ordered to, to start it with. So, um, the projected uh, date on it, I think they put in the documents twelve months. Honestly, I expect it to be closer to at least thirteen, possibly fourteen months of construction.
But I know sometimes when we delay these things, they, the change orders and stuff add to the cost and the timelines get skewed and.
We uh, we had the choice, uh, a couple of weeks ago, something did come up. It was after it already been advertised for bid, possibly making a change. And uh, the engineers helped out on all the bid documents, uh, as long as they could before they had to submit uh, any alternate plans. And I made the decision, I'll take my lumps for it. I said, we're, at this point, we're not gonna change anything. Simply because it took us six years to get here. I did not wanna start uh, changes and anything have to go back to the state for reapproval and uh, put us behind. I said, I want the, the plant started. We need to get it started, uh, for a lot of obvious reasons. And uh, we're not on, not only need to get it going, but uh, get ground broke, get our funding secured, get ground broken. And then if there's some minor changes that we need to make, then we will do that. And that seems to be standard practice with, with uh, all the folks that, that had. And that seems to be standard practice with, with, uh, all the folks that, that has sewer plants that I have talked to.
So a hard deadline will come at a pre-construction hearing where some of those things may have already been worked out before pre-construction hearing, right?
But the pre-construction hearing will be with the plans as the state has them right now.
Okay.
That's what's been approved.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Ms. Asia, hearing, hearing, hearing nothing. Go, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
What was the, what was the motion again?
To accept the bid from WNO Construction for six million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Which was the low bid for recommendation of our engineers.
That's, that's fine, Mr. President.
To accept it. It was the lowest bid, but was a complete bid.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't hear, I just didn't hear who made the motion, who made the second. But I'm, I'm, I'm yes on it.
Okay, uh, Councilman Brown made the motion and Councilman Smalling made the second.
Smalling?
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Is unanimous?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, let's record reflect that it is unanimous. We need to just have a, a caveat that goes with this treatment plant. We had, uh, a consent order that was handed down. Uh, in two thousand, I think it was two thousand seventeen, it may have been sixteen. That, uh, was basically telling us of, of all the problems that we had with, uh, our treatment plant. And Buddy Coontz wrote a plan and had it to, to present to TDEC for the treatment plant and, uh, it meant to stipulations of what is called an SEP, a supplemental environmental project. Because the plant got put on hold. Uh, TDEC has been researching this order, updating it, but keeping it alive. Uh, what we have found is that, um, a new order has been, been issued. All of you have a, have a copy of that order and, uh, we need to know how to proceed with it. I had, uh, GMC to go ahead and ask for a thirty day extension on it. So we have until April the fourth now to, uh, to move on this. And GMC put together a, a proposal for us and, uh, I received that. We had a meeting about it, uh, yesterday. And we were going to be able to use the information that Buddy Coontz delivered to us in two thousand and sixteen. Well, according to our engineer, TDEC is no longer going to accept that. So, uh, we need to make a decision. Do I want to keep the current engineers working on it now? Or do we want to move forward with it? Uh, when he gave me the price of the project and Aaron has been working closely with him. A lot of the problems that, uh, were mentioned in the order was, uh, about the collection system. I have placed a couple of calls to TDEC and have sent, uh, an email to the enforcement division asking for at least a, uh, phone meeting with them for, uh, me to discuss and know where we are on that point. So, uh, because this is so closely tied with the plant. I want to, uh, basically I want to hear, uh, TDEC enforcement personnel tell me personally that they're not accepting it. Uh, unfortunately, that will put us very close on time. Uh, we don't have a lot of time. We may can ask for another extension. But, um, the proposal that GMC sent to, uh, to do all that, if, if you have that, I think the bottom line on it was one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to write that plan. And I basically, and the council wants to, uh, correct me on it and please feel free to do so. I said, I, I'm not sure that we can come up with that kind of funding because we have so many other things that's happening. I'm trying to get a, a plant built. Uh, we have other issues that we're facing. Uh, we, we had the pump, we had to purchase tonight. And I said, I just don't have an extra one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for you to write a plan for me. And I asked them, I said, in your plan, does it give a cost estimate for, uh, the new project that would have to be okayed by TDEC for us to use? And he said there was no cost estimate. So going on the theory, if the engineering plan was one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, at least the cost estimate for the, uh, the work would be a hundred thousand dollars. He was under the impression that he felt like Aaron could do the work, uh, could do the, uh, could take care of all that. And he felt that once materials were purchased, then, uh, TDEC would accept that as going into the next phase. There's a, if you can see that report, there are four phases in it. The supplemental project, the corrective action plan, but a capacity management operations and maintenance program. And then an annual reporting for the next three years of twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. But they resubmitted a new plan to me today. And it basically, uh, is for them to submit the environmental, uh, improvement project or envi- uh, supplemental, uh, environmental project. And the cost on that project is fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, I need to know from the council, do you want me to just, uh, tell the engineers to give me an invoice for what they have done? Or do, we, we have not signed any kind of contract or anything? So, uh, they can bill me for the time that they have put into it? Or we can sign this proposal and send it to them? Or we can, uh, you know, if you want to get someone else totally different, uh, to do that? And, um, Penny, uh, I guess there's some folks that she works with, thinks that they could probably do it for us. But can we get it done by April fourth? I mean, we're, we're both on time here with it.
I think our engineer firm would have a hard time doing it in that, in that timeframe as well.
Uh, they, they have been working, uh, I think they fully expected us to sign off on the full project form, but that's what they sent to me. And because that was the first time I'd seen any kind of estimate numbers and, uh, was asking question about construction and, and what, Aaron might can shine some light on it because I know he is talk, talk to you. He's, he said he talked to you yesterday about some stuff.
Yes, he talked to me today, yesterday, both.
Can, can you shine any light on what, what they want? Because basically just other knowing what area of town that he's looking at. I don't know anything about the project. And, uh, like I said, I, I want to hear TDEC say they won't accept. You know, and I don't deny what he says. I just want to hear it with my own ears that they won't accept treatment plant. And I mean, I'm thinking six million dollars and then one hundred and thirty thousand sounds pretty miniscule compared to that. But, uh, it's money that, uh, we don't have.
Um, the project that we decided that we were going to try to go with is, uh, Tricia, Tricia Avenue behind BP. Uh, there's, uh, the trailer park there. And then there's also, once you go past the trailer park, there's three more houses on the, um, on that side of the road. And, uh, what the plan is, is to redo the lateral lines and all of the, um, uh, tanks and valves and, and everything on the vacuum system on that side of the road.
Do you have any idea what a cost estimate for that would be?
I have no clue. I know just, uh, the vacuum alone, um, where, we're looking at, uh, uh, right at twenty thousand dollars, just in the vacuum, just, just the pits. And it's not installation, that's just getting the material. Uh, the.
Is that per pit or for all of them?
That's for all of them. That's, there's four of them over there. And, uh, that would be replacing all four of those pits. That's with us doing the labor. Um, and then, uh, as far as the piping, I, I don't have a clue, honestly. I'd, I'd have to, uh, get, get prices on that.
Now, the question that I asked him was, was, is this something that we could cover under depreciation? Which is basically what she was asking about a while ago. Uh, he had no idea. So he was, uh, going to be checking on that today and, and try to get back with me.
Now, I will say he, he had asked me about if we would be interested in doing the project. Uh, and, and I will, if we have to do it. Uh, I prefer not to just because of manpower and time already. Uh, but if we have to do it to, uh, appease the state, uh, you know, we'll, we'll make it happen. But, uh, uh, that, that's going to be a pretty good sized project. I mean, it's gonna be a week, maybe two weeks worth of work if we did it ourselves.
Okay. Um, as far as replacing the pits and things like that, that is something we've actually been discussing for months.
Right.
Uh, the lines, uh, we haven't discussed that. So it is, he basically is saying replace all, all the lines.
Alright, so, uh, the lateral lines, uh, what the lateral line is, so you have your main line that goes, um, from your station. And it's the bigger, bigger line. Well, then lateral line would be like the, the branch off of it that goes to your, your pit at your house. And then goes from that pit to your house. So we would actually be replacing from the house to the pit. And then replace the pit and then replace from the pit to the main line. So all of that would all be new lines. So that would help with, uh, uh, water intrusion, uh, uh, infiltration and things like that where the old piping from the houses and things like that have grown roots, growed in the joints and, or busted or things like that and water's coming in them. And that's a low line area. That's why we kind of picked that, uh, and, uh, it would, uh, in that short distance, it would, should have a pretty good impact because there's a lot of, of houses right there on the system. So that's, that's kind of what we decided on.
What's the counsel, yes?
Mr. Sibor, if you hired two more people, you don't think you could do it?
Oh, I know I could do it. Uh, but is it gonna take me from other things that we need to do vitally? Yes, but I know I can do it. I mean, we can do it with the guys we got now. Uh, but, uh, you know, if I just got two, two extra guys, yes, it, it would help tremendously. Uh, but it's, it's still, it's a pretty, pretty big undertaking, uh, for just a few guys. But I can do it. No doubt that would make that.
The supplemental environment project, that deadline is the second of April. Are you, are you going to be able to take that on?
I mean, like I said, yeah, we can make it happen. Actually.
Okay, and let me break in. That's to get it submitted to them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not.
That's not that the work has to be done by then. But, but we're, we're going to get into trouble here if we're not careful. It is, when we give a date, then according to the order. Okay, let's say we're going to have this completed by April first of next year. If we don't have that completed, there's an eight hundred dollar per day fine. So we've got to make sure that the date that is put in there is acceptable to TDEC. But it's also acceptable to us.
Right.
Uh, we don't need someone just willy nilly throwing a date in there and say, oh, you can handle it by then. No, we, we've got a, uh, an undersized crew here that's doing garbage pickup parks, uh, streets and everything else. Uh, we're going to be terribly busy. So that, that's why we, we've got to have a lot of input into what is being placed into these documents. And, uh, granted, I've spent a lot of time, uh, in the past two to three weeks, uh, answering questions about this and sewer plants and, and Aaron, uh, and, uh, well, you remember the work study. It's, uh, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's about where we are. And he's had, uh, at least two more programs thrown at you since then needing, uh, needing items. Uh, and we'd be great if everything that we had was on the computer. And it was there so that we could, uh, just pull up the screen and go to GIS and say, we've got two hundred valves, we got five hundred feet of pipe and we got six pits. But everything that we have is on paper. So, and a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, most books of pages are missing in the book, so.
Or he's got them in his aid.
And, and you don't, you don't have any experience with doing this in the past or any type of plan like this, do you?
Not this, not this large, but we do this on a, you know, a regular basis. We do this type of thing. Yes, sir. Uh, we replace the lines and, and pits, you know, on a fairly regular basis.
Well, I'm talking about just the, the, the plans, putting, you know, there, these, the, the scope of services that, that they're talking about.
No, as far as doing the plans and things, no, sir.
Mayor, where would the money come? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
The, the engineer firm would be doing the plans. That's right. Is that right?
That, that's what I'm asking now is basically, do you want an engineering firm to do the plans? Or do you want me to look outside of the engineering firms that possibly, uh, some, some smaller companies that might would do this? Uh, obviously, uh, we do not have anyone inside the, the city that could, could dedicate the time and, and talent that it's going to take to, uh, to get these plans to, uh, to TDEC in, in this amount of time. So, and it may be, uh, where they went in and, and broke apart the, uh, the four parts to, uh, to, uh, into four sections. And it was presented, uh, that way. It, it may be that we could do one section of it at a time and, and proceed from there. I mean, the, the new proposal that they sent out today was for, uh, for fifteen thousand dollars for the first task. And that was to, uh, to write the, uh, um, the scope of services for the supplemental environmental, uh, environmental project. And the cost on that is fifteen thousand dollars.
Looks, looks like to me our backs are against the wall on getting this thing submitted by April the twelfth. I don't know if we can find anybody else to get it done at that time.
Yeah, and, and, uh, here's the cold and hard facts about it. Uh, we could pay the fine. And, uh, that would, would take care of the fine that we presently have. But what I suspect that will happen is they would take your, your fine, uh, funds. And then they would issue another order ordering you to get this work done. And at, at that point, then you're not. And at, at that point, then you're not only paying the fines, then you're paying to get the work done also. Uh, with this plan being presented, if they accept it, at, at least ways, but it is going for a, a plan and it's not just being thrown out on the table and given to them like you'd hand it to a cashier at a restaurant. Does that make any sense?
Where would the money be coming from?
It would have to come out of the sewer fund. It, it would be a sewer project, so it would have to come from the sewer fund. And that's where I am. That's why I wanted to talk to T D A officials myself. You know, we're, we're trying to get a we're trying to, to run a dilapidated plant that, that should have been torn down ten years ago. And we're trying to keep it running, which is very expensive. And we're, we're trying to do all the things that we need to do to build a new plant. And I mean, it, it's, it's pretty overwhelming to be honest about it.
So we could proceed forward with an S E P and meet the deadline and be okay? And then revisit the other items?
But it would be the plan and, and that's the reason I was asking Aaron to speak on it. What, whatever we do, whatever this plan is, is what we would have to follow through. And I want to make sure that this is a plan that's acceptable to Aaron because he's the one that's responsible for these collection lines.
And we're certain that, that suggested plan would be something that they would accept at this point?
He thinks they would.
Cause I know we, we've done that in the past and then they said, no, sorry. And we've spent the money and I said, sorry, it didn't qualify.
And, and but that's why I'm bringing it up here tonight. So we can discuss this. That, that, this is a hard decisions that you have to make, that, that you, you know, of how you move forward. And keep in mind, uh, this is just one area of the city. But there again, we've, we've got to get this treatment plant built. And it really surprised me when Logan said that T D A would not accept that as a project. Because it, it wasn't even, this all started in two thousand fourteen. The order goes back and, and tells us about it. So we, you know, it but they were gonna find us a hefty amount in two thousand sixteen, seventeen. And because of the plant, like I said, it got put on hold. But now we're, we're beating the plan and they're, they're moving ahead with what they've got to do too. Of course, that's, that's what they're that is their purpose and, and their goal is to make sure that we have good clean drinking water and we dispose of our wastewater in ways that is acceptable to the environment.
Is Mr. Logan not available?
No, I don't know who was on the iPad, but they're completely gone now.
Well, I want to state that I feel like it's unacceptable that Mr. Logan and the firm is not on Zoom where we can ask questions tonight because I feel like they should be accessible to the council and the mayor and Aaron. If we're making this kind of proposal and wanting us to make a decision this way. So I will be giving them a call tomorrow.
If we don't have this plant submitted by April the tw- second, what's the, what's the penalty?
Honestly, Councilman Lee, if I don't know. Do, uh, do you have your copy of the consent order there?
Well, I was looking for it. I couldn't find it. I, I probably, I know I printed it, but I don't know where, where I've got it. What my thinking is there, and I don't really know if that's possible. If, I don't want to spend that hundred and something thousand dollars this engineer and company. But I feel like is put us in this situation already. My thinking is if we just don't meet that deadline, then T D A could set another deadline for us. And that'd give us time to get somebody else to draw this up for us at a cheaper rate probably.
Well, if I could get T D A to, if I could ever have a conversation with them and ask them what I needed to do to ask for another extension, I, I can do that on the phone. Like I said, if you, if you find your order on page four of it under section twelve, it tells for parameters for the exceedances that we have. And honestly, I feel that a lot of it is plant related. So there, there again, I want to hear it come out of their, their mouth that they're not going to accept it. I mean, I, I can accept they don't want to accept it, but I want to hear it.
I don't know how anybody else feels, but I'm not gonna make a motion to do this right here tonight.
Okay, can we even make a motion without being on the agenda?
Well, it, it's basically tied in with the sewer plant. So it's, you know, so of course, they, they sent this all to me for me to sign off on. And I told them, I said, I'm not signing contract. I'm not signing off on this until I have more information. And basically, in the, the one that they sent today, but you have here is, is they're saying that if we don't get this to them tonight, then we are probably in danger of, of missing that April second date. So.
So if we had to, we do have another week to where we could do a special call and get this information, but that's putting them on a deadline. That's unacceptable.
Well, all, all we can do is is try and forge in with the information that we have. I really thought that was him on the call a long ago. So.
No.
They zoomed in at the last meeting, so they know how to do it. They had the links and everything you provided, right? Can we maybe take a ten minute break and try to contact them? Because it is important that they give us this information.
Let's, let's do that. It's eight o'clock. We'll, we'll, we'll take a, a five minute break, ten minute break and see, see if we can get in touch with them and
Actually, it's nine, nine o'clock. Somebody's changing clock back here.
Well, I tell you what, you you, you want to just give me the okay to go ahead and try to get this stuff worked out and communicate with the council? As to what
I think that's a good
as to what we're gonna do. And if we need to call a special call meeting, I'll call one.
That way you can act on it the next day or so.
I think that's, I think that's a great choice.
Because I mean, you know, I'm waiting for, for T D A to call me back and, and I really need to talk to them before we move forward and decide anything.
Well, I'll make the motion that we allow the mayor to take care of this matter.
I'll finish your head second.
Discussion. Discussion.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes. Can y'all hear us better tonight?
I can, yes.
We're tied into the speaker from that one.
And actually
It's much, it's much better, Aldous Molly, much better.
If the volume needs to go up more, she has a whole control panel here, but that she can crank you up louder in here. She can crank us up louder there and, but it's good to hear it's better.
It, it's much better. Yes.
Okay, but the last item on the agenda for us to discuss, and we've been talking about this for quite a while, uh, is the H and R resource resolution. As we've discussed in meetings past, we've lost our area to be able to dispose of sludge. We, we had two areas and one was privately owned and we were asked not to come back out there anymore. And it was strictly due to coronavirus. It wasn't anything that was affecting the city or anything. It, it was just because of the dangers of coronavirus and we honored that gentleman's wishes. Unfortunately, we have to come up with a way to dispose of sludge. And if we don't, then we're gonna be shutting a digester down. And when the digester goes down, the plant will pretty much go down. Uh, so there, thereby it pretty much renders the plant in, in a non-use basis. It's just a big storage holding tank. There's a couple of options. We've looked at some, some sludge presses. We've looked at different forms. Uh, I have started the, the process of getting the necessary permits. We, with the, the current land use of solid what's that permit called, Chris? It's land use solid
Land appliance.
Uh, appliance. And T D A issues that and we are trying to utilize all that we can with that. And that's what has kept us out of trouble so far. I'm knocking on some wood there. Chris and Thomas and Penny and what's her assistant's name?
Diane.
Diane have all been working together to try to make this thing come, come together and work. There's only one company that is in this area. It's a company that Portland uses. I, I think Harson may have used them a time or two. Lebanon may use them. They're, they're the only local company that will come and what they call press the sludge. And what they do is press all the moisture content out of it, recycle it back through our waste tanks and, and retreat that, but it takes, it removes all of the solids. And with that permit, it can be trucked to the landfill and disposed of like ordinary house waste. Uh, so but he offered to let us do that at is it point seven five cents? Uh, well, we're, we've got two parts of it here. Uh, point seven five for pressing and a point two oh for them trucking it to the landfill for us. Uh, we looked at possibly trying to find our own trucks to haul it out there. We had a gentleman that was actually even willing to, to take it and dispose of it. But he only had one truck. And he said, my problem will be if my truck breaks down, where does that leave you? Because you've got these people and they're working, but it's estimated two, ten hour days to run through our tank and, and filter this. So we asked them about it and they said, we have trucks that we can actually truck it with. And it's a, a point zero nine five cents. So per gallon is the way they do it. We did not have anyone that came to bid on doing the electrical work for us to have them connect. Fortunately for us, when we called them and told them that, and, and Chris is handling all, all of his negotiations and all with them, told them we didn't have four eighty volt electricity out there to run their press. And they said that they actually had a generator that was capable of, of doing that. And the, the proposal shows their rental fee, their time for setup and, and tearing down. And because this is considered somewhat of an emergency basis, I think this is something that we need to, to move forward with and do. We could take a chance, I guess. If, if this needs to be quoted and sent out for sale bids, uh, we might could get by, we might not could. Like I said, when that, that digester gets, gets full to the point, we shut the plant down. So I'm considering it an emergency. The other nearest company that we found that, that does this kind of process is in Ohio. So this one is, is just up the road. Pretty close by in Kentucky, what, fifty miles? Okay, and what we will try to negotiate, if, if we try this for for a time and it works well, or maybe even twice, that they've asked me to, to do a one year agreement with them for this price. But my, my proposal back to them was when they come to Portland, could they go ahead and get ours while they were in Portland and try to, try to knock that price down? Actually, from, from last year, when they first made a proposal for us, it, it's dropped quite a bit in, in setup time. But the cost of it per gallon, I think, was the same, but their setup fees and all dropped, dropped a little bit. And you have a complete breakdown of it. And I just wanted to find out if, if you wanted to vote on that or if you wanted me to sign the proposal and move forward with it. You know, we, we don't have a big choice on it. Chris, I'll, I'll let you speak to it just a moment here. Chris is our director out at the wastewater treatment plant and he, he can tell you more about it. I hope to.
As of today, we're at roughly sixty-five percent capacity. Uh, we're down one area that we can haul two, that sound club. Myself and Dan sat down last Friday and figured out how many loads we could take out per, per day and stay in compliance with the state. And that was roughly two, maybe three loads if it was a real, real dry season.
We're not there yet.
We gotta get the dry.
It, it wants much is not gonna, not gonna handle it.
Yeah, and that's, that's what scares me to death. And, and you got to remember, you're taking, was that a five thousand pound tanker out there? I mean, a gallon tanker. When you get in mud, feels like we got right now. A lot of times you don't come out of it.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Um, Mr. Mayor, did they tell you or Mr. Chris when they could get to us since we're at six? Do they know we're at sixty-five?
Uh, I haven't spoken to them in well, over a month.
They said this proposal was sent February eighteenth. And, and honestly, I thought I was gonna have to do an emergency call meeting for us to get them out here. I, I couldn't believe that, that Thomas was able to get the truck out this week and, and get it down there because it was well, when they did this proposal, it was full.
Yeah, we actually hauled eight loads last week out there, two per day. We, we didn't want to exceed the capacity of the land. And we also, with the pump we have down there, we was able to do what's called de-water or de-cant. And what that system will turn the air off, but, but the solids still above and pull the super date off the top, which is clear water. We put that through the headworks to retrieve it. We've actually able to pull it down. We were around sixty percent after we hauled eight loads and de-watered.
How often would they have to come to us and do this?
It's, it's estimated two times a year for two days, ten hours each day.
I, I see we got, once again, got no choice to get this done. I, I see we got, once again, got no choice but get this done.
And there again, if, if this is uh, if it is authorized and this proposal was signed via the, the funds for it would have to come out of uh, out of our reserve fund because there's uh no line item in our current budget for this. So when we do the budget amendment, that's uh, that's where we would need to, we need to add that in.
I'll make a motion that we accept the A and A Resource Management Proposal for a period of one year like their proposal says in. And because this is something that we can take to the new plan, we'll have to take to the new plan.
Well, and you're correct. This, this uh, this is something that's gonna be ongoing now. Unless we buy the equipment, start doing it ourselves.
I'll please a second.
Have a motion by Councilman Smalling, a second, by Councilwoman Head to accept a proposal from H and R Resource Management. Uh, any more discussion? And that is with the uh, with the intent that it will come out of our uh re- reserve fund, so. Anything else? Ms. Kishen, your turn.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Yes.
Smalley?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that this is unanimous decision. That is everything that is on the agenda tonight. If I have a motion in a second, we will adjourn. You stand adjourned.
Add it back to two hours and fifteen minutes. We did two hours and eleven minutes.